I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for coming this evening. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trusty Guyer.
Here.
Trusty Spurley. Trusty Baumann.
Here.
Trusty Youngerman.
Here.
Trusty Marisak.
Here.
Trusty Betzinger.
All right, and we do have a call on this evening. Okay. All right, item four is our public comment period. This is the time for any member of the public wishing to address the board on any topic. If you are on the agenda later, you specifically, you don't have to speak now, but otherwise come up to the microphone. If you can, state your name and address so we have it for the record, and then your two minutes. Go ahead.
All right, many of you may have seen my face before. My name is Rob, and I live on the Mayfield Speedway at 2366. Quite some time ago, the board made an extremely great decision to close down, and I put that in air quotes for reason, the Mayfield Speedway at Roxbury Lane. I want to thank all of you for that, as it's been a tremendous help. However, unfortunately, lots of cars are still speeding down the road and just go right through the barriers mad because of the fact that it's there. In fact, now they do it with an attitude and speed up as they go through it. Both myself and many other neighbors, which I talked to, have noticed this. I have two quotes from some neighbors. One is, I'll just give them both. My opinion is that either they need to close it or open it, because I live directly in front of it, and I can tell you that we see traffic through it all day still. Yes, it is cut down, but it has not stopped, and now the people that go through it are belligerent and speed up as they go through, creating an issue for those of us living directly in front of it. From another neighbor, a quote, "I have sent the video recordings we have taken to Steve Youngerman. I was told to call the police when it happened. By the time you call the police, it's already too late. I'm behind a ticket. I would be behind a ticket camera as well." But I agree, they wish they would either just close it or figure out something, but that opening is just an invite for people to go through, especially since they know the police can't monitor it all the time. In closing, in the world we live in, what we do, what we can do at the end of the day is all we can do. I recognize we're all on the same team here as well. As such, I want to push to completely shut the road down as it was originally and architecturally intended for. It's been over a year. People are living just fine. No one has officially complained to the village in any board meeting, and others maybe on the side I don't know about. I think we would all agree that 80% of the people turn around and go on the other way as they lawfully should. However, based on observations, the other 20% of the people are the ones still causing the problem. Because of this, it is very clear we still have cars occasionally tearing up and down our street, especially where I live, on the straight part headed mostly south, when we do not deserve that. This road will function just fine with it completely shut down. School buses will not be an issue either, because they are totally different school district. Delivery services will survive. That's what they do. I can assure you that this isn't the first time they've had to change a route because someone wants socks delivered to their house. As far as public safety, besides looking at a map, Oswego Fire Station 3 can actually can and will get to the duplexes faster by going directly across Orchard Road on Golena and turn right on Concord anyways. But don't believe me, go and try it out, and you'll see that that's the case. As far as MPD, with the constant congestion on Route 30 and Orchard, again, it's actually faster for MPD to turn right out of their station on Route 30, turn left on Lakewood Creek Drive, and get to Concord to get to Mayfield. Try it out as well, and you'll see what I'm talking about. I appreciate all of your time today and attention to this issue, and look forward to a permit resolution.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I know that village staff is doing some traffic counts. We did some initially. We did some more. We're going to do some more, and this issue is going to come back up in front of the board, and your testimony, I guess you'd say, is helpful, and I appreciate kind of the holistic approach to your reasoning there with the different school districts, that kind of thing. And we'll look at all of that, and we'll keep you up to date on when we will be talking about that in the future.
I want to clarify, because, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Baumann, they're not two different school districts, two different schools.
I had to check on that.
Same school district. They're both Oswego school district.
The buses are different.
Correct. They're two different schools.
They have to be like a bus having to do all that extra work.
Correct. Two schools, two different schools, same district.
Same district. I could have been mistaken. I just don't think it's the same bus.
Nope, that's fine. Just wanted to clarify that for the record.
And while I agree with you that it's not perfect, it's good to hear that your opinion, and it sounds like of your neighbors, that the current status of it is a vast improvement from what you had before.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right, any other public comment?
You have a letter in your packet that I wrote before the planning commission meeting, and I emailed a letter today to all of you, which I think you probably all have.
Yes, and can you state your name and address?
I'm sorry. Sharon Caddish, 2900 Tanner Road, North Aurora, Illinois. We own the property at the very end of Commerce Drive, the last property that backs up to the Ockett property, 1791 Commerce. And all I really want to say is that, in addition to what I've already written and said, that the three businesses that back up to the Ockett property are all concerned about potential problems with air pollution, groundwater pollution, wetlands pollution. Particularly, Mr. Misek from Lab Media spoke last time about his air ducts being at that side where it's going to have diesel exhaust. And Ockett Brickyard never drove on that gravel with a semi truck. They used forklifts. They had an outside loading dock. Everything going into Ockett property is paved. The driveway and the front and back of the building that's there are all paved. And all I'm asking for is that they require the space that will park semis, tractors, and trailers to be paved. To, semis are notoriously leaky. The pictures I showed you were from semis parking on that parking lot, and they hadn't been parking there that terribly long. And that will go down into the groundwater and possibly into the wetlands. And I guess that's all. I just can't understand why it can't all be paved. This is not like, Mr. Hernandez has some similar properties on Vore and Industrial Drive and another one, excuse me, and they are all stone, but it's the, that area is extremely different than the properties on Ockett Road, and I hope you will consider not allowing him to park semis with their tractors attached on the stone. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon.
Do you still want me to sign in?
Yeah, thank you. All right, any other public comment that's not on the agenda? All right, is there anybody? Let's see here. Is there anybody online that would like to make comment? I don't see anybody. Okay, anybody submit comment to any staff that are here? Perfect. Other than...
He wants to know if it's on the agenda. Can he speak now, or do you want him to wait?
Yeah, if you can hold on, I'll let you speak when you come up, when your agenda item comes up.
Okay, great.
Yep. All right, with that, I'll move on to the consent. I read the items. Entertained a motion for approval. Minutes of Village Board Meeting of June 27th, accounts payable through July 11th, accounts receivable for June of 2022, the building report for June of 2022, water production report for June, the waiver of a temporary liquor license fee for Montgomery Fest, the approval of the Windy City Amusements Carnival amusement permit, and the appointment of Kevin Fricki to HBC. So moved.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Baumann?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
All right, that carries 4-0. Thank you. All right, under items for separate action this evening, the first one is Resolution 2022-012 approving an IGA between the Village of Montgomery and the Fox Valley Park District for Montgomery Park, and then the second one is for the amendment, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll discuss them at the same time and vote on them individually. Turn it over to our attorney.
Okay, thank you. As President Riley stated, the attached resolution authorizes the execution of the intergovernmental agreement with Fox Valley Park District for a long-term lease and the improvements at Montgomery Park. Some highlights of the agreement are that it, there's an initial 20-year term with an automatic renewal of five times 10 additional year terms. It authorizes the improvements, including the elevated seating, stage, shade covering, memorial plazas, the shoreline improvements, also reserves easement for the future, or a future easement for the off-site compensatory storage, contains the maintenance provisions, and then also reserves the park for Montgomery Fest and other village special events. Again, there is two different items that we will act on. The first is the original agreement, which Fox Valley Park District has previously passed, and then since the passage of that agreement, the village did have some additional concerns with the maintenance provision that was in there. So the second, the amendment to the agreement does make a change to Section 5, where the original agreement has the village paying a $3,000 maintenance fee. The second agreement has that fee waived in the case that the village and the park district come up with a plan, and they're satisfied with the village's maintenance of their improvements in the property. So again, that'll be two separate votes, but the only change in the second one is to that Section 5, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Anything?
I have a question. Is there ever, I want to make sure that the village is coming in and doing improvements to this park. Is there ever a time or any sort of period or anything where this would potentially be off limits to the residents from using these amenities? Is the park district saying you can't use them during this time, or are we having any issues there?
No, I mean, the only instance it might come up is if the park district was doing some sort of overall maintenance, you know, where, to the park where they'd have to shut it down for some certain period of time, but the agreement calls that they have to do whatever work they'd have to do in the least restrictive means and provide notice. So it would just be if there was a unique circumstance that came up, you know, that they had to address, in which case, you know, they would work with us to do that.
Thank you.
All right, any questions on this or the amendment?
No.
Okay.
Motion to approve Resolution 2022-012.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Baumann?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes. That carries 4-0.
Motion to approve Resolution 2022-013.
Second.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Trusty Marisak?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Yes, I thought it went this way.
Trusty Baumann, trusty Guyer?
Yes.
You said yes?
Yes.
Perfect. That carries 4-0. Good job. Good job, everyone.
She's mixing it up a little. I like it.
Okay.
Save your paying attention, that's all.
So, good work. So moving on to item C and D, again, we'll discuss both of these, and we'll address them separately, is recommendation of the PZC on PZC 2022-009, special use and variance requests for 1975 Ockett Road, and the second is the enacting ordinance 1971. There's two in your packet. There's a waiver of first and passage on the second, which has been requested by the petitioner, which we'll talk about. With that, are you doing this one too? All right.
Okay, and for the benefit of the public this evening, the first item is the recommendation of the Plan Commission, so that is a vote to accept the recommendation. That's not necessarily the approval of the ordinance, so there's two separate items listed. So I will start by going over the recommendation on behalf of Director App. So the petitioner is proposing to operate a truck terminal at 1975 Ockett Road, which is zoned M1 light manufacturing. There's no changes being proposed to the existing building. However, the petitioner is proposing to use the southeast portion of the property for outdoor storage of trucks. Outdoor storage is a special use in M1, and they are also requesting the use of an alternative surface for that outdoor storage area. As part of the special use request, there's also four variances that would be required from Section 104A3, which is the parking design standards, 1107B2B, which is screening requirements, and then also 1107B3B, which is screening requirements. The variations requested specifically are to allow the semi truck trailer parking smaller than the 12 by 60 minimum that's required, to not require fencing along the south and west boundaries of the outdoor storage area, to not provide the required minimum landscape screening along the south and north boundaries of the outdoor storage area, and to be able to provide the landscape screening on the interior perimeter of the fence of the east boundary instead of on the outside exterior. The public hearing was held last Thursday night on July 7th. There were a number of members of the public and adjacent business owners present who expressed concerns with the site, which Director App does summarize in her report. In some, those were environmental concerns due to the proximity of the wetlands and flood plain, the noise, dust, safety and security, questions about lighting and aesthetics, and just the general concerns for the Ockett Road corridor. The Plan Commission did ultimately recommend for approval of the special use with alternative surface, and then they recommended three of the four variations. However, they did not recommend approval of the fencing, a waiver of the actual fencing variation, so they did recommend the approval of the landscaping waiver and to allow it on the interior, but they did not recommend the approval of the actual fencing. So with that, there were a number of conditions, which I'm not going to go over in detail, but they include the conditions for the variances and the special use, in addition to all the conditions on the outdoor storage alternative surface that we have previously implemented for other users who have the alternative surface outdoor storage, including putting in that nuisance deposit and having the regular maintenance on the site. And with that, I can take any questions. And I do believe the petitioner's here, and then Engineer Wallers can answer any specific questions as well.
Perfect. Perfect, thank you. At this time, would you like to come down and make your comments? If you could just state your name and address as well. Thank you.
Ruben Hernandez, and we're at address 791 Orfance Ward in Aurora, Illinois, 60505.
Thank you.
I got some of my background in here.
Yeah.
Pass it along.
Certainly, yeah, you can just pass it around. You can start with Doug.
I've got a copy of the coverage. On the package is the contract I have, which is continuously to get the special use for the trucking. I think I have one extra copy. Thank you.
About five years ago, I started my first project on 1415 Borave, and we completed the location. Now it's occupied by one company, one logistic company. They operate the mechanic shop and 110 truck parking. Our neighbors are the Bus Central Company. They just opened, you know, last season. We don't have any issues, you know, really. We don't have one. We've been there for, you know, three, four years. We don't have no issues. We fence around, the trucks go and park, and then they go to work and come back. Very similar to what we're proposing to go in Ockett. And I, we took the time to write some of the properties that we own on Montgomery. It's been great. I mean, we start from nothing. I'm a concrete contractor, and it's just, just being consistent and hard work. That's all.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I don't see any facilities for the drivers. Is there facilities for the drivers, washrooms, trash or stuff?
No, there's not. There's not for them to, they basically park, and the mechanic shop is the same, same company. It's not for them to stay there and shower and that. It's, they basically park there, leave to their house, and if the truck needs service, they service the truck, and then when they come back, the truck is ready, you know.
But it's also just, it's also a parking lot.
It is a parking lot.
As well?
Yes.
But they're not allowed to stay in the trucks?
They're, yeah, they're not allowed to stay on the facility. There's no room for them to stay in the facility.
Well, they have sleepers on their trucks, a lot of them. So that's, again, I'm...
Yes, they have sleepers, because they, most of the trucks are off the road.
Okay. Again, I'm concerned that where are they putting their trash besides the bushes and the fence line?
There's, there's trash enclosures, and there are bedrooms that they can use on the building.
Okay, thank you.
What's the, what's the hesitancy in paving the parking lot?
The code is that, you know, the first 250 feet needs to be paved for the runoff of the, you know, when the trucks come out, and we're meeting the code of the village that we can use alternate gravel surface.
The code says you can use alternate gravel surface?
Yes.
I believe the code says it needs to be an impervious surface, and as I read through here, and the facts of findings from the original, forgive me, I was in North Carolina last week. I was unable to attend the Plan Commission meeting. When I look at... Even, I was reading this, on the landscape screening variances, it says that the proposed variations alleviate an undue hardship created by the literal enforcement of the UDO, and the petitioner says, "It's the petitioner's opinion that the UDO creates an undue hardship or practical difficulty requiring landscaping around the entirety of the outdoor storage. The current south and west property lines have existing vegetation that provides screening." Now, if everyone who came in here, the reason we have a UDO, and it stands for Unified Development Ordinance, is that there is some resemblance of continuity throughout the village. We're not going to just let you come in and do whatever you want.
Oh, no, 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 not this.
The... Are you up to, up to code and have no issues with any of your other properties in the village?
Yes, yes, I am.
Are you up to code and have no issues with any of your properties that aren't within the village that are unincorporated, Kane or Kendall County?
Yes, I am. I have another properties on, in King County that, you know, we're going through the process in Aurora, and it just takes time with engineers to get the plans and everything approved. It just takes time, but I don't have any, any issues.
You're not having any code enforcement issues with any of your current properties, either within the Village of Montgomery or within unincorporated areas?
Not in Montgomery. I don't have, like I say, we have a property in Aurora. We've been going through the process for three years, and they just can't get everything aligned. But this, it's not because something that I cannot do. It's just something the engineers takes time. One example, it was Army Corporation issue. They took three years to release the violation, and it's not because I can't do anything. They don't respond. You can call, email, and do anything you want, but they don't respond, so it's nothing, it's out of my hand.
And I appreciate that. I also appreciate the line of questioning. Let's keep it more towards the use of the property and not the operator of it, but I understand your questions.
Do you want to know where I'm headed?
Are you thinking of another one, or are you...
No, I'm, go ahead. I'm still thinking.
Mr. Wallers, maybe you could answer this question. Looking at the aerial of the view, the gravel parking lot, the nature of the business that's going in, from an engineering standpoint, the potential of gas, oil, things of that nature, is there any environmental reasons that you could let us know during this meeting that would be prohibitive for gravel? A lot at that location.
So I think maybe a better, I'll try to answer that question, but I also want to give some perspective on the alternative surface that was developed. And if you recall, some of you were on the board at the time. We had a petitioner come in on Orchard Road, redeveloping an existing building, and needed a large storage yard. It was a reuse of an existing building, trying to bring in a number of jobs, and that company, which is Michael's, was really only using the parking area for long-term storage and not for active moving of trucks or vehicles. And so we were asked to see if there was a way to develop another surface that could be used, which would be virtually dustless, which is the goal of paving the parking lots, is to avoid dust in the village. That's the primary driver for that. So we came up with the concept of using CA1 and CA7 aggregates, which are larger stone without any fines, which is the, probably the thing you're most familiar with, with gravel roads, where you drive down, there's clay that's, that's part of the gravel that makes it, you know, compact, but it also causes the dust as you drive down it. So we're avoiding that by going to an open graded stone, but it's not ideal for driving, because it'll displace. It's kind of like driving, it's not just like driving on marbles, but it's like that where it'll displace, the wheel loads will displace, so it's not great for maneuvering, but if you're just, you know, moving things in and out infrequently, it works pretty well. So that was why the alternative surface option was developed, and it is not a guarantee. It's a, a petitioner can request it, but the village doesn't have to grant it if the conditions aren't right. In terms of, you know, let's say bad housekeeping for any business, if you spill something on asphalt, it's going to run off to the edge of the asphalt in grass or gravel. If you spill on gravel, it's going to go directly into the ground. Either case is not good, so, you know, unfortunately, bad housekeeping is bad housekeeping. The owner of the property or the operator of the property is still responsible for any pollution on their property, whether it's on a gravel surface or a asphalt surface. So I think the primary advantage of the paved surface is the, is the all-weather nature and the fact that you eliminate the element of dust. It may make it easier to identify spills, for example, you know, that's, I think you could make that argument, but again, bad housekeeping is bad housekeeping.
Thanks, Pete.
I have several questions. The existing building, what are you going to use that building for?
The existing building is perfect for the logistics and trucking company, because it has 10,000 square feet building for mechanic, and it has a methanine on the top for like parts, and it has 5,000 square feet for office space, which they need a lot for logistics, a lot of space for people who direct the truckers going back and forth. a lot of space for people who direct the truckers going back and forth. Um, and obviously they need the, the truck parking. It's the only thing is, is need and it has, I think, almost 40-something spaces for the personal. So, I mean, it's going to create a decent amount of, uh, you know, work, uh, you know, employment. And like I say, I mean, the other location, I was able to rent it to one company and I have a prospect, two prospect company. They're interested in leasing this property. So I don't have objection in the future, you know, to, you know, if, if it needs to, to pave. I mean, it's, right now, I, I don't think I'd be able to afford it because you're talking probably, you know, three, four million dollars to pay that. But me as a contractor for right now, because it has existing gravel, we just have to take the CA-6 off the top and put the, uh, CA-7. It's in a minimal cost, but at least I can start getting revenue and start making improvements, you know? And the landscaping area, it's not like we don't want to do landscaping area. It's just, the existing one is, is just great all the way around it. I mean, it's just, uh, we talk about it and it's just to remove all that and just put another one. It just doesn't make sense. But I don't have objection if, if you want me to put new landscaping. It just doesn't make sense.
So you're not going to...
Just one, Dan, real quick. One thing to clarify. Are you purchasing the entire property, including the building?
Yes. It's eleven and a quarter. I'm sorry. There's a contract there.
Yeah. And it says a portion of the lot. I didn't know what that meant. That's all.
Uh, it's two parcels there. It's eleven and a quarter acre.
I was thinking that you were just buying the area for the truck parking.
No, it's the entire area.
Got it. And then your goal would be then to lease out the building to a user, to one user that would use the whole thing?
Yes.
Or I guess you would have every right then to lease it out to...
One, one user.
But you could lease it out to anybody you wanted to, have anybody park their trucks there. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm just saying that's reality, right?
Uh, it's, I already went through the experience because I had three different parking lots where I used to have 210 different customers and it's not easy to keep track. So it's a lot better to find, um, a better, a bigger company who has, uh, 100, 150 trucks and they lease the entire thing.
I get you. Okay.
Yeah, that's where I was going. You're not, you're not renting it to independents. You're renting it to a...
No. I, I went through that already.
That's going to be their trucks, their employees driving the trucks?
It's going to be the owner of the trucks and their mechanic shop and their logistics on the same building. That's, that's the concept. Um, and I have a couple prospects that they're very interested on, on leasing it.
The property on Commerce that you purchased, how does that fit into the plans with this property?
Um, that's the one lot on, on, in between the, and, uh, it's just, when I went to see the other property, I just see the, a big potential. If my tenant wants to put another building for warehouse or something, it's another acre and a quarter. So I, I purchased already close on that one. And then regardless if, you know, buying this one at that time, I thought that was a good investment to buy it because it's a good lot. It's a nice lot and it has potential. So...
Okay. So you're not intending on expanding the, um, the parking into that lot?
Not in the area. It's, it'll be more like a, like a warehouse. You can put a, a decent piece of, you know, 30,000 square foot building or something like that for, obviously for warehouse, you know, but it's just an option, you know?
The, um... Yeah, I, I appreciate, you know, your, uh, investment in the Village of Montgomery. This would not be my preferred use for this property? Um, but as far as the, um, alternate surface, um, and I drove the area over the weekend, the entire Ockert Road corridor, we've required everybody to have improved surfaces and not gravel. Even when Palm's Tire purchased the other building and they were doing some improvements, it was required that they, um, paved their gravel in that area. They chose concrete. Um, the new facility going in on Commerce and Ockert, that's all going to be paved. Old Dominion's paved and there's a reason. Um, I also drove over, you know, where your facility is on bore and baseline and there's a lot of gravel, lots of facilities over there that have been there for a while. Um, I just don't want to see a gravel lot in the Ockert Road corridor. I appreciate the dust, um, concerns and that you can minimize them, but that lot is pretty close to Ockert Road. Another concern I have is trucks tend to pick up stones and they take them with them. Um, I don't want to see all that stone on Ockert Road and start getting complaints from people with cracked windshields and stuff.
One, one of the things is like, um, you know, cause I'm, I'm a contractor and we have trucks and if you go to a quarry, you're going to pick up stone. I mean, hundreds of trucks a day, not one or two. I mean, you're talking hundreds of trucks that go in and out, in and out and a gravel road. And they have a system where they have a well and the truck comes in through the water and the tires come clean. It's very minimum expense, but we're talking hundreds of trucks a day. They go into the quarry and come out of the quarry and it's, uh, I don't see an issue that something like that, engineers, you know, can design that. But, and you know probably what I'm talking about. The trucks go to the well, the water and they come clean.
Right. I've, I've drove for them before and even when you leave that, that bath, you can still have rocks in your tires, especially if they're larger rocks in between the wheels.
The main thing is, yeah, they get rid of the dust and any, anything that there's in their tires, but, you know, uh, I mean, here we're proposing, you know, and this is, we just, you know, the main thing for me is, you know, to, to get the approval so I can purchase the property. And if there's conditions, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to work with it. It's just, um, uh, we have till the 20th. If, if I can, if I don't get a, an answer by, you know, tonight, uh, even if it's under conditions, I, I can't buy this per, this, this property.
Yeah.
You know?
Just a couple of questions. Um, and I'm not sure that I, I mean, we'll debate that as, as a full board. I'm not sure of the scenario of a vote tonight, just to be honest with you. We have two board members that are missing, but if it was unanimous, you know, I could, I could be, we could take action if somebody wanted to. Um, the, the other thing is I'm not a, I've always been sort of a realist on truck parking, right? We, I, I understand in this world, there needs to be locations in every town or most towns where there's facilities to adequately and safely park trucks. We've decided that it's not. We don't want people parking at Wal, you know, Walmart. Um, there's other uses that are very high profile that we haven't been excited about. Um, so I think I'm more practical about that, the use on this site than, than maybe, um, maybe you would expect. Some of the landscaping thing, I would lean on the planning commission on what their recommendation was, um, but with the alternate surface, um, I just don't want us to get into a situation where, um, where start, we started with equipment storage, long-term heavy equipment storage for a user that came into the property and, and go from that to approving a special use so that you can market it to sale to anybody, right? I mean, that's really, or, or to lease to anybody that you want. So it could be any user. And, and I, I trust and believe your intent today, but it could be, you know, anybody parking their truck there at any time that you want. Um, so I think the alternate surface is important to me. Um, honestly, if it was a different scenario, like a user that came in, um, with a specific use on this property that maybe was a little bit different, um, I'd, I'd reconsider. But for me, alternate surface, right now, the use that you're proposing, I think requires pavement, some form of pavement.
Yes.
And I mean, like I say, if that's, that's what it requires to be approved, I have no problem with that. So if that's what it needs to be done, you know, we propose because another property is my neighbor from Central Boss was approved with the same proposed, uh, surface. And it's my neighbor. So I, and the city of Montgomery and, I mean, why not going to propose the same if this was already approved, not less than, I don't know, eight months ago? You know, it was completed. It's, it's the only reason. I mean, is, uh, it's just, I don't see why not.
Right. And I don't fault you for ask, for proposing and asking the question. I would do the same.
Correct.
I'm, I'm again, I'm, I'm a no related to the alternate surface. I'm a, needs to be blacktopped, needs to be asphalted and, and sealed. That's, that's where my stance is.
I mean, I got, it, it needs to be an impervious surface.
Impervious, correct.
Concrete, asphalt.
Concrete, asphalt, whatever, whatever works.
It's more appropriate on the side if that means that you phase it over time or whatnot, but...
Improved surface.
Right.
I agree.
I think my answer would be different if you were coming forward and we had your business plan, your business model, specifically what it was going to be. Um, looking for that variance, but looking for a variance to where any company could lease that property and we don't know what it is and what the future is going to hold. Um, I think that's the biggest determining factor for me.
Yeah. I mean, pretty much I, I know what it's, it's going to be. A logistic company with their own, you know, truck service and their own trucks.
And then, in that case, we'd have to hold it to the standards of the other logistic companies that are in that area that when I'm looking, and as we're talking, I'm, I'm looking at the satellite. I'm looking at all the buildings and the trucks and the trailers and they're all on a, almost a concrete surface at that point. So then I would have to go in that direction to hold to that same standard that the other logistic companies in the area have done to their properties.
And I understand and that's what I'm saying. I have no objections to, to go with that if, if that's what I need to do, you know? I mean, the main thing is for me to get the special use for the trucks and if it needs to be in a hard surface, I mean, I have no problem doing it. So...
Okay. Um, any other comments, questions from the board? Doug?
Uh, no, I, my question would be related to the motion of the planning commission because we would be accepting their recommendation even though we're looking too variant on that?
Well, the recommendation's the recommendation. So you accept the recommendation as what they recommended. However, when it comes to item number two, which is the village board's adoption of an ordinance if it so chooses, you could vary, you don't have to do anything that the planning and zoning commission did. Um, you can completely tailor it to how the board deems appropriate. However, the one caveat to that is to overcome their negative recommendation with regard to the fencing. There would have to be a super majority vote on that component. Um, however, this board could certainly approve outdoor storage without alternative surface, um, even if you vote to accept the recommendation or however else you wanted to tailor it.
Completely separate issues.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I mean, again, I, my issue with this is the alternate surso, surface. The fencing, the landscape variance, I get it because when you look at the satellite imagery, it would be ridiculous to cut down a bunch of trees and then plant new trees. So I, I, I understand that portion of it, but I would make a recommendation to accept the planning and zoning PZC 2022-009.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and second on, let me get that.
Item C.
So it's item C. So this one doesn't really count for anything. I think they told you.
For the public, this is just accepting the fact that the, the plan commission made a recommendation to the village board.
So it doesn't prove anything. Any further discussion on that?
Trustee Merzak?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
You're confusing me today.
All right. That carries four zero. All right. Moving on to item D. Um, walking into the meeting today, um, I, I was not, uh, thinking that we were going to waive for, waive the first reading and pass anything tonight. However, it really is the pleasure of the board. Um, I mentioned to Teresa that we wouldn't, um, but again, it's really up to the board. You know, I don't think either, neither of us had the information that he's sharing, that he has a contract date. But again, I wouldn't use that as your reason to approve, deny, uh, use in, in the village. Contracts can be amended if they need to be. But what's the pleasure?
In, in order, it, it requires a super majority, which is what, five?
Only if you want to approve, allow for the waiver of the actual fencing requirement, then that's super majority. However, the rest of it is not. So if you want to, what I'm hearing right now, and there's one component I actually haven't heard any discussion on, which is the size of the parking space. Um, the nine parking spaces, they requested a waiver, um, to be 12 feet wide by 45 feet long for nine of, I don't recall how many total spaces, 70, I think are regular.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, regular.
A portion of them are a bit smaller.
Well, uh, those would be used for like just trailers.
Yeah.
So that was one of the variation requests, which I haven't heard any negative feedback on. Um, what I'm hearing is the board is okay with the two variations on the landscaping to allow the waiver on the two sides and to allow on the interior of the fence. And then I'm hearing that the special use is okay, but not the alternative surface.
Correct.
So far is my summary of the comments I've heard.
Then the plan commission also on the, um, the fencing, they did not recommend the variance in partial fencing.
Correct. So this board would not need to over, unless you wanted to allow the waiver on the actual fencing. If you think that it's appropriate to not waive the fencing requirement, there's no super majority. You disagree with the plan commission and don't adopt that.
So to require the fencing, we adopt it. We do nothing.
Right. We adopt it with the exception of the alternate surface.
You would adopt, you would agree with the plan commissions and it was actually version two in the packet, which is now not applicable either. But yes, so I, I can help with a motion if I'm summarizing it correctly.
So, um, real quick, so is it a super majority of those present or a super majority of those holding office?
It requires four votes, four of six trustees. So it would be all trustees present would have to vote in favor.
Oh, okay. Cool.
Does Mac get the vote?
No, that's, that's the nature of my job, man.
Okay.
He sits in the big seat and doesn't get the vote.
So if, and if I could ask one more question also. So obviously you have a company, uh, in mind that you're going to, to lease to. How, how does that company operate? Um, what are they going to use a facility for specifically to?
Specifically for the mechanic shop, the logistics and the truck parking. They have three different locations right now and they don't fit. So they will utilize this property as one. Uh, this company ordered like a hundred trucks a couple of years ago and they're not going to complete the 100 new trucks until end of next year. So right now they have about 65 trucks and, you know, but they're growing. All the, all the trucking companies are growing, but all their trucks are new, pretty much new.
So, so how are they going to utilize the trucking, the parking? What's, what's the scenario? Um, because trustee Merzak asked about people sleeping so that they're not independent, so they're not going to, you know, just park there overnight and sleep in the trucks?
They's...
So I presume that this company is not going to allow?
The main thing is them, they've been in the road for a week. I don't think they want to go to the parking and sleep. They want to go to the parking and go home. And the reason this concept comes well is because when they go and rest a couple of days, the mechanic shop take care of any issues with the truck, tires, brakes, or, you know, it's, it's why it comes, uh, so good to have the, otherwise if you park by a single, somewhere else, you have to have somebody to drive you over there and then go and pick you up. It's, it's, it's just very good. People are willing to pay more just for, to have everything in one location.
So they're not going to be loading or unloading trucks there? So basically this is almost...
There's not loading. There's no, there's no warehouse.
Okay. So then this is basically going to be like a, for lack of a better explanation, a staging area for the trucks when they're off the road and for them to be maintained.
That's correct.
And so they will presumably they'll have their personal car there while they're on the road and when they come back, they'll park their truck, get on their personal car and go home?
That's correct.
And then come back in their personal car?
I see a lot of drivers, they don't have a car. They call Uber and then they go and pick them up and take them home because they're close by. The, the, you know, it's, it's so amazing if you do any search of how many truck drivers they, they live around a facility that you're trying to put up and it just, you know, it's, it's a lot of drivers. And obviously they live in the community. So...
I have a couple more questions. Uh, the mechanic shop is, are there, the, the company that you have interested in this, are there certain hours of operation? Is there coming and goings 24 hours a day? Are the mechanics working certain hours or is it 24-hour? What is it?
The mechanic shop, um, usually it should be normal hours, you know, like seven to five, seven to eight. I mean, we got this exception in Penske. They're 24 hours mechanic shop. I mean, we got this exception and Penske, they're 24 hours mechanic shop. And I got my tenant next door. They don't want to go do more than 10 hours.
If, if they're, and I think they're, you're looking for, I think, what was it? 79 parking, truck parking spots or something like that?
Yeah.
If you, if the, the employees are coming in and they're parking their vehicles at this location, then they're taking the trucks out and they might be gone for a week or so, correct? If that happens and you've got 79, where, where are the employees parking their cars?
Well, they've got their own parking for, it has an employee parking.
Is that big enough for 79?
And again, as he stated, the drivers don't typically drive their cars. They Uber in or get dropped off or picked up.
But if they drive, they leave their car on the same spot as the truck.
Okay, all right, that, because I'm thinking how, if we've got 79 trucks here and vehicles.
No, no, no. They pull out and they park their car.
Because as an employee, I'd rather be in that enclosed location as my personal vehicle than out front. Okay.
I like the idea of parking where your truck is because you got a spot to park your truck when you come back.
Well, yes, because that happens a lot when people, if you don't have your car there, then some, some other, somebody comes and parks in your parking spot. And it's, it's, you got to find out who parked there, you know? But it's a different issue.
Unfortunately, I, I feel the longer the conversation goes on, I feel more unsure about the actual use because it feels like we're talking about hypotheticals as to who you could, could potentially lease to. And the special use ordinance that we would enact tonight, you know, would spell out exactly what you could do, right? So we would vote tonight and he could do anything that's outlined in here, regardless of, you know, what you intend to do today. And I'm just being upfront on that. I appreciate that it's entirely enclosed with the fence.
Yes.
Or will be? Is it a security fence, like gated in the front?
Yes, it will be.
I just want to clarify what the wording is going to be because I think trustee Mersec said initially that you were okay with some of the screening requirement. Planning and zoning didn't want to allow variance on the screening requirements.
There's two separate screening requirements. There's landscaping screening and fencing screening.
Okay, so we're just talking about the initial landscaping screening.
Correct.
And, okay.
I'm good with everything plan commission did with the exception of the alternate surface. Correct. I'm good with all of their recommendations with the exception of the alternate surface. I'm a no on the alternate surface.
Okay.
Would you like a motion for that? Would you like me to fancy that up?
Yeah, I mean, is that the pleasure of the four that are here? Because it needs all four of you to vote yes in order for this to happen. If you're unsure, we can wait and we'll figure out the contract stuff.
Well, they don't need four if they want option two. If they want to adopt option one, you would need four.
If we want to not accept the planning zonings, negative.
So if you do what Doug said, you agree, then it's just a simple majority of those four.
Correct.
So three of them.
Because you're not overcoming the negative.
Okay.
But I believe we want to overcome the negative.
No. I think you agree that you want to require the fencing is what I'm hearing.
We want to require the fencing. They asked for the variance on the fencing?
But aren't we overcoming the impervious?
Right.
We can make that edit.
We can make that distinction.
They approve that.
Okay.
So we can, we can agree with them on three of the four and say no to the last one.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah, but you don't need the super majority if they said yeah the other way around.
Okay.
So yeah, what's the pleasure? Matt, Dan?
Yeah, I'm good with just what Doug said, with what the plan commission recommended, except for it's got to be improved surface.
Okay.
Please make that subject to attorney review.
Perfect, all right. So motion for ordinance 1971 granting special use with an agreement with planning commission with the exception of the permeable surface. We want the approved surface required for this. And, and to attorney, subject to attorney review.
Second.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Trustee Mersec?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Baumann?
Yes.
Trustee Guy?
Yes.
All right, that carries four zero. Staff will finalize that ordinance and get you a signed copy. When is your closing?
Supposed to happen the 20th.
Okay. And we'll get it to you before then.
I really appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we have two items for discussion tonight. The first one is a liquor license request from Gas and Wash at 1055 Orchard Road. Come on down. Welcome.
My name is Kim Farbeck. I'm an operating officer for Gas and Wash. We're here for consideration for a liquor license, a class M for our location on 1055 Orchard. Do you have any questions?
Good job. Any questions? I looked up class M liquor license today, as I'm sure you all did, and exactly what that entails. Generally what we do is a, we have three options. We need more information, we're good, or no. And then we start background and all that kind of stuff. Any questions from the board?
I have a totally unrelated question.
Sure.
I work down near Lockport. There's a Gas and Wash at 355 and, and whatever road that is, 159th.
Yes.
And I went in there the other day and they have a, like a little food stand in there that I think has the best tacos, some of the best tacos I've ever had.
Yes, they are pretty good.
Is that going to be the same sort of situation here?
It's just a Dunkin' Donuts in this location. So there's one franchisee. Correct.
Gotcha.
Can I make a motion for tacos?
But we're growing, so we'll take that into consideration.
Another location has a pop sign, I believe. Right, doesn't one of the locations have a pop sign in it?
We do, we have two, we have a couple, actually three.
Maybe in the outbuildings. Now my wife will be disappointed and trustee Youngerman.
All right, any other pertinent questions on a liquor license request?
Move forward.
Move forward.
Boards in favor?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
We appreciate that. Do you need us to sign?
No, you're good.
Thank you.
That was the hardest 15 seconds of your life, wasn't it?
You had to sit through this freezer of a room the whole time, though. I'm literally shivering in, shivering in here.
Are you?
Yes. All right. Last item for discussion is 2022 pavement management report study update. Engineer Ott, welcome. So you got the memo on the white polo over there? Thank you.
Tyler, it's cold in here.
He told me, I want you to just tell him.
What's that? Oh, really? He can change that? Man. Turn the heat up.
Is this another PowerPoint?
Yeah, it's only 15 minutes, it should be good.
Did you say 50?
15.
Okay.
So Freeman didn't help you. It's good to see you.
Nice big screen that we could put them on right here digitally.
Well, first thing we got to.
Thank you, sir.
MFT years, we typically do more, don't we?
Yes.
Considerably. Okay. Thank you.
Wait for Pete to sit down. All right, thank you. Or do we want to wait for Doug to get back?
If he's going to get me a jacket, we should probably wait. He's not.
Not unless you're taking his.
Yeah, right? All right, go ahead.
All right, thank you. As stated, we're here to talk, give an update for the pavement management program like we do typically every year. We just kind of overrun, update costs, make sure everything's looking good, take a look at the streets, everything makes sense and see if there's any other streets we need to address, update things. One of the big updates this year was to include, we're for sure moving forward with the, the two grant projects that we had in there previously. Seems like the, they're in the grant, the draft program for the Kane Kendall Council Mayor's, so I'll briefly touch on that. So we're just going to go over the paving history and improvements review, go over the updated five-year plan, what the next steps are, and then I will be here to answer any questions. So the first exhibit is just the paving rehabilitation history since the non-home rule sales tax went into place, so 2016 to 2022. Obviously, the 2022 streets are currently under construction, but those will be completed at the end of the year. So this is just a overview of all the streets that have been repaved in the past seven years. And that was the first 11 by 17 exhibit that was handed out. And this next slide shows a paving history by mile. So you can kind of see what the history has been going all the way back to 2004. And you can see the big jump that happened in 2016 with the, when the non-home rule sales tax went into place. And then as trustee Youngerman stated, the kind of the every other year bump that you would see is because we use the MFT funds every other year. These, this does include the projects that have been completed with federal funds, like the Briar Cliff Road resurfacing and the Ockut Road resurfacing. So we, every year we, we go through and we update the, the village's pavement management update database to show the streets that were completed this year. We age the streets one more year to get a new score for each street and then just review the unit prices we've used and determine an updated five-year plan. Is there any room to add streets because costs went down? Is there streets we need to add because their conditions poor? Anything like that? So just some highlights of what we did was, so we updated the village's pavement management database, which we're keeping track of all the streets and when they've been resurfaced. We did refine our unit prices to include inflation adjustment. So that's probably the most major thing that happened this year is costs have increased, you know, probably 10% more than they have in the past is what we're projecting. So there is additional costs in years four and five. The cost increase for year three was offset because originally we were thinking we were going to get a $500,000 grant for Concord and we were able to get a $750,000 grant. So that cost kind of offset. But the other two years, the costs have increased. But in talking with Director Van Warren, he seemed comfortable with being able to cover those costs and still complete the five-year plan as presented in the last update. As stated earlier, the plan does include the Concord Drive resurfacing grant project and the baseline road. If you remember, we came to the board with a PSA for design engineering for Concord, I believe in the first meeting in June. And since then, the draft five-year program has came out from the Kane Kendall Council Mayor's. And it's currently in the public comment period. But I don't see any reason why those, those streets, those projects, sorry, would leave the draft program and not be selected. So there'll be a full transportation committee meeting in July to approve that. And then it'll go to the full council in August and then it should be approved by CMAP in October. So the village was successful, seemingly successful in three projects, these two projects, and then the Douglas Road, Douglas Avenue resurfacing from Route 30 to Ashland Avenue, which is a joint project with the city of Aurora as well, which would happen in, I believe in 2027 is when we're projected to do that. And then the other update that got done was with the approval of the IGA between the Aurora Township and the village. We added in the streets in Blackberry Heights subdivision, which will be a joint project with the village paying for their roads and the township paying for their roads. But will be done as part of the village's project in 2024. This next exhibit, which is the second 11 by 17, is just a map that shows all the streets that will be resurfaced. This map does not reflect, just as a caveat, this map has not been updated to include the Aurora Township roads, but that whole subdivision there in Blackberry Heights will be getting repaved as part of the 2024 improvements. I will get an updated map and can send it out to everyone when that's complete. And then this next slide is just a revised table that shows the funding sources for the various different projects and the total costs. So in this year, you don't necessarily see a bump per se like you typically would because we're doing that Aurora Township funded project. But typically that year would have been like $700,000 less than the previous year. And then a couple of things to note. So in 2023, we're projected to get $750,000 in federal funds through, for the Concord Road resurfacing. And then in 2024, projected to get $395,000 in federal funds for the baseline road. And then the village did receive, has received five out of six installments of the rebuild Illinois bond funds that the governor approved, I think, two or three years ago. And they're slated, we're slated to use those next year as part of the resurfacing on top of the general MFT funds that we typically use. The next three tables is just a summary of all the streets that we're doing, the limits from to, the approximate costs, the length and the area of each of those. And then the streets highlighted in orange, those are the streets that would be paid for as part of the Concord Road resurfacing. On the next page, the orange would be the baseline road resurfacing project. And the yellow are the streets that are being paid for by the Aurora Township Highway Department. And then 2025, no changes to the previous year. So with that being said, the next steps would be, what we're looking for is just general improvement specifically on next year's roads so we can move forward with a design engineering PSA, hopefully for the next village board meeting. That would you, allow us to start walking this, doing the inspection of the streets, getting things put together in order to go out the bid in early January and open bids in late January, early February, which is our typical timeline. And we found that that, that's been the best way for the village to get the best prices. And then start a construction generally April to May of 2023. So with that, I'm open to any questions.
Real quick, you want to talk a little bit more about the Aurora Township partnership and how that came, came about? It's pretty cool.
Yeah, so during our five-year plan, we identified the streets that are in Blackberry Heights. They're in fairly poor condition. And Director Wolf and I reviewed the streets, looked at it and thought it was an opportunity to try and get in there and do the whole subdivision as opposed to doing, you know, it would, it wouldn't be bad if we came in and did Concord and Mulberry because those are all owned by the village. But then you get into Kevin and Brentwood, which are half owned by the village and the township. And then it just, it looks silly when you come in and do half the street and the other half the street's in poor condition. And I think by doing this, we can all save each other money. We're going to get better prices because it's a bigger project, a bigger area. Township's certainly going to get better prices because they're grouping in with our larger project. And then we're also, also working with the township to identify some drainage concerns and come up with some improvements to hopefully fix some of the drainage concerns that exist in that area, too. So it was a collaborative effort with everyone to try and get that done. And I think it, it's a good use of working together with other entities to save everyone money.
Yeah, that's awesome. Does this happen very often? Is that like a normal thing for villages to do with their townships? It should be, but it's awesome.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've done it before with, not on this scale, but we've had some times where we've done stuff with the Aurora Township previously. And they've done stuff with us, especially in that Montgomery Road corridor where they'll pave Union Street, but the village only owns like the first 200 feet. We'll hop on their program. And then obviously, like we said in that, like I talked about with that grant thing, we're working with the city of Aurora to get all of Douglas done, too. So I think it's good to try and work together.
Awesome.
Are you doing the same thing on baseline road for the portion of baseline that the county owns between the Pasadena loop or?
I have to look into, I think the village might, even though they don't own the right, all the right of way, I think they might still have to be responsible for all of the maintenance and resurfacing for that section. But that's something we'll.
We plow through it. Years ago, I just remembered that the county paved Pasadena than that portion of baseline on their own.
It's, we'll definitely look into that to make sure that if there's a, if there's a way to cost share with someone and it's, if it's not the village's responsibility, we'll reach out to them.
Okay. And then baseline is just going to be an overlay? It's not going to be curb and gutter?
No, no.
I'm a little disappointed.
I'm a little disappointed as you take over for Pete. Pete would yearly throw in the PCI pavement condition index. And you've got to, as you're learning, we'll let it slide this year, but as you continue to go forward, you got to, you got to throw in that term a little bit more.
All right, I'll make sure I get it in the next year's update.
You didn't mention anything from the 1970s either, so see what you can do. Pete's a dear friend, I get to say that once. All right. Well done.
Thank you. I assume that's support for what we have down.
Yes.
That was 15 slides.
You need to talk to Jeff.
Thanks, Chris, appreciate it. All right. Anything new?
I just have one question. Can we have a update on the staffs of the Public Works building?
So we do have an update. This week, the contractor, both earth site contractor and the utility contractor have been in working. They're anticipated with good weather to finish the pad, building pad this week. The water main installation domestic loop around the building was completed today with the exception of the hydrants. Those will be installed at a later date after precast is erected. The raw line relocation has also been complete as far as the pipe is laid. Connections are scheduled to be made next week. With well four being offline, we'll have to shut down the plant. So we're making those accommodations to fill our ground storage, to be able to operate while we're shut down. And the Geo Pier contractors slated to come in Monday, the 18th. Right now, the only issue with that is the current 150 operating strike that's taking place. There may be issues with being able to procure the aggregate needed for that, but we're going to cross that bridge when we get there. So that's the basics of that and then the foundations will follow.
Do we have a new completion date? Anticipated, estimated completion date?
That was shared with the village board. The new schedule, updated construction schedule was shared, but I can resend that out.
Okay, but I mean, it's the same as you shared last time, nothing's moved?
The, the, the one that I sent out about a week and a half ago should be, is still intact, yes.
Yeah, I didn't know if the 150 strike pushed that even further out.
Okay.
That's it?
Just attended Cricket Wireless Ruben Cutting on Saturday. It was nice, they had some corporate folks there, some interest in Montgomery Fest, sponsorships and coming down to the fest to get to know the community. So did come up with the paving program, Chris. You know, lady came and asked me when her street was going to be paved. She lives on Adam. So that's one that's ground oiled, but no asphalt yet. I said, well, her husband's actually a union guy, so he was aware of the aggregate strike and was well aware of the delays and why they're there. So it's nice to meet somebody that was understanding.
Yeah. All right. Anything else?
No, Montgomery Fest is coming along. We, you know, we're, plans are in place and, you know, contracts are being signed and everything's getting, I's are dotted and T's are crossed, so.
Is the fireworks provider the same as it was last year?
Yes.
I believe we're on what, the last year of a three-year contract or?
Yes.
I was at the Naperville fireworks on Sunday and both my daughter and I said that the Montgomery Fest fireworks we thought were a better firework show, so.
You make sure your daughters come and see me during the fest, they're getting some ice cream.
Kudos, kudos for that.
All right, motion adjourned. So moved.
Second.
No future meetings?
We don't have any. I'm freezing, Doug. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Powellman? Trustee Guy?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Member adjourned, thank you for coming.